Anytime we want, right?
And then you'll just instruct me to do the roll call. We'll just do it like we normally do.
Okay, well, I think I think we're all here. So I gabbling the meeting of the Campbell Planning Commission, calling it to order for June 9th, 2020. And legally, I should say this, that the Planning Commission meeting, this Planning Commission meeting will be conducted via telecommunication and is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act and Executive Order N dash 29 dash 20 issued by the governor. And with that, Corrine, can we have a roll call, please?
Certainly, I'll do an apothetical order. Commissioners Bookbinder?
Present.
King?
If.
Colville?
Present.
Heinz?
Here.
Riplin?
Here.
And Chair Cray?
Here. And for the record, Commissioner Ostrowski is absent, as we've said. And our first order of business, we're very thankful that Corrine takes great minutes because these are the minutes of our February 11th meeting, which I'm sure is at the tip of everybody's minds. So hopefully, everybody did have a chance to review the minutes and then we had quite a discussion on one item there at least. So are there any corrections or a motion for approval?
I'd like to move to approve the minutes as they exist in the packet.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Corrine, can we have a voice vote?
That was Commissioner Heinz who seconded?
Yes.
This would be an all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I abstain, I wasn't there.
Thank you.
Then I don't know what we do with communications exactly at this point.
There were a couple of emails that were forwarded to you by Daniel. There's nothing new other than those two.
Okay. And are there any agenda modifications or postponements?
There are none, Mr. Chair.
Okay, now I guess at this point, and I know that there's at least one person on the meeting. So this is the the point of the meeting where any member of the public can address any item that's not on the agenda. And I don't know if we have anybody who wants to do that, but this would be the time to do that. And I don't think there is anybody hearing or seeing nobody. I think we'll move on with our agenda. So we're, here we go. Item number one is a public hearing to consider the City of Campbell 2021 dash 2025 Capital Improvement Plan for citywide projects for consistency with the Campbell General Plan. Staff is recommending that the project be deemed exempt under CEQA and it's tentatively planned for the city council meeting of June 25th. Oops, it says 2019, but I assume that's is it June 25th?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess that would be 2020, not 2019. And the project planner is Daniel Fama. Daniel?
Thank you. So this is the annual finding for the Plan Commission to determine that the city's capital improvement plan is consistent with the city's general plan as required by the California Government Code. The purpose of this is really to focus on consistency with applicable general plan policies, strategies, and goals as outlined in the staff report. We took an effort this time to actually go item by item of new capital improvement projects and additional expenditures and identify the applicable policies and goals that staff believes they are consistent with. Just in terms of your purview, we really tried to avoid getting into particular projects unless those projects the commission believes may not be consistent with the general plan. At that point, we should focus discussion on that. We do have Margarita Mendoza here, our administrative analyst, who did a lot of the work on the capital improvement plan. Should you have any questions on particular projects? And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Daniel. Any commissioners have any questions for Daniel?
I have two questions about a particular project. If there's nothing else before we get into that.
You know, I have one general question, Commissioner Bookbinder, on a specific project. And I just thought of this, Daniel, when I was going through the report. And I noticed that it said there were 13 new projects. And 13 that already had funding and carryovers. And I, when you I guess I'm wondering if it would help in the future or if it's pertinent to what we're doing, if the if the new projects can be kind of highlighted or pointed out. I actually couldn't find 13 when I went down to our to our tables, when it said the year of funding. I counted like seven or eight or nine projects, but I actually couldn't come up with 13 that I thought were the new projects. And I just didn't know how to find them. And I didn't know how pertinent that is to our discussion. I thought it might be to some extent.
It's in the, it's in the desk item that that Daniel sent out, just I think, I don't know if it was last night or this morning. But he shows the
The 13?
The 13.
Yeah, that's an updated CIP. The staff report also did excerpt those tables. You do have a table that identifies new capital projects, then the two items that require additional appropriations. And then the last table are existing capital projects that haven't previously approved in previous CIPs.
Okay, but I like, what, so the 13 new, okay, I like that.
Like, for instance, Measure O, the Civic Center Improvements.
I got it. I got it. Never mind. Okay, good. Commissioner Bookbinder, please, go ahead.
So the, I had a question about the purchase of a I have this written down. A Lenco Bearcat. As I understand it, it is intended to replace a V-150 armored rescue vehicle that the city's had since 1998. I guess it is justified under public safety. Just out of curiosity, how often has the existing V-150 unit been used?
So I'll start off by trying to answer that. So I don't have such a thing in terms of how often it's been used, but I can give you a recent example. I don't know, last year, you recall Denny's, there was an incident with a hostage situation and at the Denny's on Bascom Avenue. I don't know if many of you recall that.
Yep.
Um, yeah. So in that case, we needed to borrow equipment to assist the police officers respond to that situation. So it's, it's, in this case, my understanding is not so much of a it's a need because when the need is, when we have a need for that kind of vehicle, it's a really critical public safety need. So it's something that we need, the police department would like to have in terms of their, their equipment available to them to assist during these like critical public safety situations. And in this particular equipment purchase, you'll see that we have, the cost is spread out over a couple of four years. And that's through a lease purchase that we, that's how we plan to acquire the capital asset through a lease, which helps spread out the cost versus a one-time higher expense.
Okay, the reason I ask is that the as I understand it, it was originally acquired, the current one was originally acquired through the 1033 program, which is, as I understand it, getting free military equipment.
Yes.
And this is no longer free. My, my broader concern is that this is it is essentially military equipment. And we're seeing a lot of that being used for crowd control purposes these last couple of weeks. And I'm I'm leery of the claim that that's useful for public safety, as it seems to be being used for quite the opposite in a lot of places.
Yes. That's definitely, you know, an individual, legitimate or individual concern that could be shared with the city council. As Daniel discussed earlier, what we want to get your feedback on is, is how the projects conform to the general plan. However, your concern is more of a policy-related issue. And
My question is how it is, does this enhance public safety, which is how this is being justified under the general plan, as I understand it?
If I can jump in there. So as part of the staff report, we did identify those policies that are applicable. So with that particular line item, we identified Strategy HS dash 1.1A, titled Emergency Planning Funding. Provide funding for fire and police services to ensure preparedness of response teams and implementation of emergency response plans. So based off the professional judgment of the police chief, he does believe that this piece of equipment does serve that need and would effectively function to help the city respond to emergency situations.
And that's what I wanted to bring up. The other thing I wanted to mention was the Harriet Avenue sidewalks that are there. As I understand it, we're planning on installing sharrows there. The strategic objective 3.3 that this is intended to enhance streets that safely and comfortably accommodate pedestrians and bicycles. As I understand it, sharos or shared lane markings do not actually enhance safety for bicycles. Adding sidewalks obviously makes things better for pedestrians, but I don't see how this improves the situation for cyclists unless they ride on the sidewalk, which I think we prohibit.
I would add that typically, a lot of projects that include pedestrian or bicycle mobility are run past the city's BPA, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Not entirely sure that was the case with this, if that has been done yet. But typically, before being brought to the city council, that is done. And they do provide that type of community and professional feedback from a cyclist's perspective. But fortunately, we do not have our traffic engineer who otherwise could provide a more detailed response to that question.
I agree with you, Commissioner Bookbinder.
If I could respond, Daniel, Margarita, this is an existing capital project that's transitioning out to year two and three. Is that correct?
I think I may have read it wrong, if that's the case.
Yeah, yes, you're right. You're right.
So it was already determined to be consistent with the general plan.
Never mind me then.
Today is the new. You know, this is a five-year plan, so we identify what we can conceivably accomplish, you know, within first year, second year, third year, fourth year, you know, fifth year, et cetera. And sometimes those move depending on the cash flow. So it was already determined to be consistent. But Commissioner Bookbinder, if you have concerns about mobility and sharos, please, you know, contact the Public Works Director and express your concerns. I think they're valid and
So I suppose this, like, the the city's policy on this is pretty much in the general plan, and we're hopefully going to be redoing the general plan at some point, and that'll come before us then.
Yeah, in fact, the draft, the draft general plan is already been prepared and it's been circulated to the G-PAC. And that should be coming your way here this, this calendar year. So yes, you'll be seeing the general plan.
Excellent. This is Commissioner, were you finished, Commissioner Bookbinder? Yes, so those are the two things I wanted to bring up.
Chair Cray, may I speak for a moment?
Sure, sure, sure.
On the Measure O, I think everything's fine. There's just a minor, minor typo under alternatives. And when I read it, it made me ask a question to myself. So obviously, it's in compliance with the general plan. It was voted on by voters of the city. Alternatives do not move forward. There's just a missing word at the end, no problem. Just type it up when it goes to city council. But I was curious when reading the alternatives, what happens with the funding? If the alternative is to not move forward with the improvements, what happens to those funds? Should that be identified within that alternative? It says continue to repair elements, but $50 million for repair of elements is quite a war chest.
So Will, we have our finance director. Because this is a voter-approved bond, I think we have an obligation, correct, to, to spend the money the way the voters approved it via the ballot measure. So you're, to your point, you're right, there may be, that may not be an accurate alternative for this project. Will, is there an alternative to not spend the money?
I'm, 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 how? So a per, a per, per the per the, of, 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 about, it, 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 it needs to be spent upon a, upon a specific I think, purposes. And they, and they are, how, defined as well. And, and there, there wouldn't, there wouldn't be any alternative, there wouldn't be any alternative options still there.
So we can do that. We can, moving forward for the proposed, the adopted budget, we can delete the alternative and clearly delineate that there is no alternative since this is a voter-approved bond measure.
Yeah, I would, I would support that. I mean, the item already has been approved. It just, the alternatives confuse me. So make it clear there are no alternatives other than to proceed or whatever the legal language said in the vote. I don't recall, to be honest.
Well, we can do that. Thank you.
Some questions?
All right. Yeah, I didn't see any way to raise my hand in Zoom other than raise my hand physically. Yeah, all right. Thank you, thank you. I have four comments that I just want to, I want to make on this, that there's a, I want to emphasize a absolute abiding commitment along with the Campbell Chamber Commerce, which I am a member of as well, that Black Lives Matter. And that is a vital importance to our lives and to our fellow Campbell, Campbell people. So I want to emphasize Black Lives Matter in that. In the budget, I see a substantial amount of variety of line items for the, the police department. And I want to emphasize total support for those, that it's vitally important for our police department to be able to have the, the, the capital budget and that's going to be for the safety of themselves and the safety of the, of the community. So that's the first two points. Third point is that I see in the budget that there's a number of steps that are being done for the communities, for the city hall. They're, they're small and minor. I just want to make sure with, with a larger Measure O coming out and this city hall, you know, whatever Measure O is going to, the Civic Center Improvements, it's going to affect a number of those. I just want to make sure that those capital budgets are actually not going to just be thrown out with the Measure O, but can actually support the Measure O going, going forward. So I know that you've done an extensive amount of work on the capital budget, and I just want to make sure that we're looking at those points and making sure that we're not going to throw them out when we do the Measure O improvements that are in there. And then the, the last point, and you know, this is what we're living in right now, that's, it's a glaring gap. And not surprising that it would be because it's so new, but how do we address the COVID-19? That's going to, that ain't going away. And how we address it, you know, there'll be a vaccine within a year, but there's going to be another another issue coming, another virus-type thing come along. We have to have a clear understanding as to how we're going to address that in our in our schools, in our community, in our restaurants, in the, you know, the watering holes we like. Those, that's an important part for us to be able to figure out. These are comments that I'm making. I hope they're articulated to the, the city council. But I think the COVID-19 response is a glaring gap in the capital budget. I don't know what it is we need to do. You know, it's got to be a general review of that.
So certain, for example, widening sidewalks. That's a capital expense that would make it a lot easier for people to socially distance. I find myself walking in the road every so often. As an example.
So just point of order, are we in the questions section to staff or are we in the general discussion? And are we asking for public comment on this section?
Well, we're actually, we're talking, asking questions of staff, but we, we can quickly move into the general discussion.
Right, taking.
Commissioner Colville?
Mr. Chair, if, point of order. So you'll need to open this up for the public.
For the public?
If we can stick with the Q and A, and then once you're exhausted with all your questions, we'll put up for public comment. Close the public comment period and then begin to offer your opinion.
Will do. So we're, we're at the question, questions for staff folks, anybody?
Yes, I've got a couple.
Okay, Commissioner King?
Okay, so it's regarding the Lenco Bearcat armored rescue vehicle. And there's a policy HS 2.1, strategy HS 1.1. And actually, on the description of the vehicle and the rationale for its purchase, there's also a strategic objective 4.1. So I'm thinking about 2.1 in relation to consistency with the general plan. I'm looking at the wording here that says that meet citizens' needs. How do we know what the citizens' needs are? And especially in the current situation? Okay, so that's a question. How do we know what the citizens' needs? Because that's 2.1. And then 4.1, improved feeling of safety within the community. Personally speaking, I'm not sure this makes me feel safer. I'm sure there's members of the community which will feel very unsafe with one of these vehicles, as we've seen in the news in other parts of the US. I would like to comment, this is, I'm not inferring, or this is no reflection on Campbell Police Department, which I think is a great police department. But I have questions here. Now, how do we know what the needs of the community are? 2.1, an improved feeling of safety. That is a subjective view. And I think it is very relevant. So it's a question, we can talk about this in the, after the public session. But those are my questions. Does the staff have a comment on that, on those particular questions?
I'd be happy to answer that. I apologize for, for not having the material in front of me. I wasn't expecting to, to join you this evening. But in answer to your first question about about its, its use, I guess I'm disappointed to hear that that there is a belief that by having this vehicle, it would somehow make our community less safe. Because it's, it's the opposite. That's, that's the truth. Which is why we, we put in for this vehicle. For a number of years, we had an armored personnel carrier, carrier that was obtained in the 90s from the Department of Justice. And that was through their 1033 program, a surplus armored vehicle. And for a number of years, our SWAT team trained and utilized that. Because when we're faced with critical incidents that pose dangers to our community, there is a need for for officers to have a way to, to, to safely resolve situations. And one of the examples that I can give you is the Denny's incident. I don't know if you're familiar with that, from February of 2019, where there was an armed individual who was barricaded inside of the Denny's on Bascom Avenue for over 11 hours. He was armed with, with a weapon. We did not have an armored personnel carrier. So the choices were that we needed to either ask for assistance from allied agencies or the alternative would be to park our normal patrol cars in the middle of Bascom Avenue, placing our officers at risk when they're trying to safely de-escalate a situation with an individual with a gun. So fortunately, we had neighboring agencies who, who brought over their Lenco Bearcats, which is a commonly used armored vehicle for law enforcement throughout the United States. That's the go-to armored, armored personnel carrier. And we were able to safely resolve, resolve that situation. And it was through the use of those, those vehicles that we were able to accomplish that. Now, the, the question may be, okay, so if you have these assets available through neighboring jurisdictions, why not just rely on, on them? And there's, there's a lot of training that goes into tactical operations, using the Denny's as an example. And we want to provide our, our officers, our SWAT operators with the appropriate tools and equipment and training, but they need to safely perform whatever operation is needed. And by relying on another agency, we, there's no assurance that they're going to be available or that they'll, that they will respond. And second, second to that is with the training component, we don't have the ability. We, our SWAT team trains on a monthly basis. And we don't have the ability to train with these other agencies with their vehicles on a monthly basis. So there, that creates potential communication issues. Misunderstandings between agencies and what our standard operating procedures are. So while I understand the bigger dialogue about the militarization of law enforcement, I also, my focus is on the safety of the Campbell community. And in order to be able to respond to situations like Denny's or an active shooter or a multitude of other examples that I can give you, we need tools that give us the capability of going into a dangerous situation where somebody could potentially be shooting at us to rescue citizens, rescue officers, perform these type of, of operations to keep our Campbell community safe. So when the question is, is it a need of the Campbell community? I, I think from, from my discussions with council and the community, and I don't know if any of you participated in the, or sat along for the budget discussion today, but I think everybody's priority is public safety, especially now. And by, by limiting our ability to keep our community safe, I think that has a direct impact on the Campbell community.
So I'm not sure if that actually answers the questions I, I asked. I think you did, started towards the end. But my first question was regarding that meet the citizens' needs. And also the, the paragraph beforehand in, in the general plan talks about the community needs. So I guess my question in that respect is, you know, what evidence do we have that supports that the community and the citizens of Campbell, in this case, believe that this vehicle is actually required? I'm not, what my, my issue isn't the justification of it, saying we should have it or we shouldn't have it. And this is an especially sensitive subject at the present time, right? So maybe this wouldn't get the inspection that it would normally get, but I think it's justified, right? So I, I still don't understand the community needs. How do we know the community needs that, right? And the discussions you had with the community, I assume, were, you know, probably more than a couple of months ago. And has the community changed its view? It may think it needs it even more. It may have gone the other way. And then the 4.1, improved feeling of safety. Again, you know, it's subjective, right? But one person feeling good about it could equally mean another person feeling very unsafe about it. And, you know, I think just from the Campbell Police point of view, you know, you'd want the community's support on a quarter million dollar purchase of a, of this vehicle, right? And that's why I'm digging into these questions because the purview of this commission is just the consistency with the general plan. Not the other things that I think you touched upon here, although relevant. I think that's for, for the city meeting in 25th of June. But I'm, I, those are the things I'm, I'm not convinced on in relation to consistency with the, with the general plan.
I understand. And I, I think in answer to your, your first point, the first question is the community needs, does this meet the community needs? And I guess that goes back to, to my previous statement that my belief is that the number one community need is to be safe. Public safety is a priority for Public safety is a priority for the city, for our community. And in order for our community to be safe, there's a number of different factors that go into that. Obviously, the officers that we hire, the training that we provide, the equipment that, that is given to them. So from a community need perspective, we are, we can turn on the TV any day, even before the last two weeks, and see situations that are deadly, potentially deadly. We, over the weekend, there was a Santa Cruz Sheriff's Deputy who was shot and killed by an armed individual who had improvised explosive devices. So when you're talking about responding to calls like that, and while Campbell's an extremely safe community, there, those are, those possibilities are there, and we need to prepare ourselves to keep the community safe. And this piece of equipment will do just that. I, I want to be a part of the dialogue with the community. I want to, to understand perspectives. At the end of the day, I look at my role as, as making sure that we have the equipment necessary and the tools and, and the staff trained appropriately so that we can handle any situation like this. And hopefully, we never have to. But when you're talking about equipment for a public safety agent, for a police department, there are plenty of things that we have that I hope that we never have to use. But should the event come where we have to use it, where there is a mass casualty event, and we are in a position that we're not able to meet the community need of being safe and secure, whether it's in their home or downtown or wherever it may be. I, I, I think that that, 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 that puts us in a very difficult situation in, in order to, to do the job that I think our community expects of us. Now, to the second point about how people feel about it, I agree with you. That's a very subjective question. I, I think in the decision-making to put this on CIP, I, I'm going on the assumption that people want to feel safe. And I don't look at it necessarily as the, the visual of this armored vehicle, because I understand that the visual of it is scary, because it, it, it connects to other deadly situations throughout the country. But at the end of the day, it's a piece of equipment that is used to keep people safe.
Can we, can Commissioner Colville ask a question now, Commissioner Jing?
Yes, please.
That's, we'll, we'll hang on there for our discussion. Commissioner Colville, go ahead, please.
I think we're having a great discussion here. I think we may be getting a bit opinionated. But Commissioner Jing has done a great job of saying that the scope of what we're looking at is just how it fits the general plan. And he's done a great job of addressing the concerns about how he feels about it fitting into the general plan. I'd like to mention one, uh, one slight fact that I, I do believe the police officers here are also members of our community. And so their safety and feeling of safety and, and the security is also of the utmost importance. And when he brings up the Denny's as a great situation where these members of our community, the police officers who are fighting for us to get everybody out of there safe and handle the situation. Their safety and their feeling of security is also equally important. So I commend them for handling that the way they did back then. But getting on to the finances, my only question was about the capital projects. We have such, you know, generic round numbers estimates for a lot of these prices. And when you look into the comprehensive annual financial review, maybe I'm not looking in the right place, but I have a hard time finding where these line items actually panned out in terms of their price, their estimates as opposed to their, their end result, uh, price that we paid for them. So my question number one is, is there a place where we'd be able to find the information about things like these capital improvements? Where we can see the projected price or the estimated price, and then we can see the final price after, and of course, this is in retrospect, but after the plan has been enacted. So in this case, we have a five-year plan. I'd like to be able to go look back and look and see clearly how that went. The question number one is, can we do that? And then the second question is, if we cannot currently do that, how do we find any accountability with, with the numbers? I don't have any problem with the spinning. I'm just a numbers guy. I'd like to, I'd like to be able to see them.
All right, um, I, I think I can, um, address some other questions up here. Um, in, in, in terms of, um, in, in terms of the in terms of the effort that comes out each, that, that comes out each a year around December. We, uh, show a, a total amount of, of, of per fund. Um, so we, um, we, uh, we don't show the, a detail of per, a, per, a, per a CIP individual, individual, uh, project in the, uh, in the effort it, uh, self. But, um, we, um, we could do a, um, a, um, a new, a new, a CIP a re-, report it itself that would give a, that would give a current update on, on, on each, um, of a project. Say, um, of what, um, what we spent. And, and, and then also a, a show, a, and also show what was approved. Um, I don't think it'd be too hard to put, um, a, 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 a new, a CIP, a new CIP type report together that would show the, uh, type of, uh, detail that, that you requested.
Thank you, Director Fuentes. That's, that's fantastic. Paul, Mr. Kimmory, is this within our scope as a planning commission to be concerned with? It seems like it may be, of course, a different department and a request that would need to go to council to have extra work done on the part of the Director of Finance, just to get another report, just to appease one small planning commissioner. I do think for transparency purposes, of course, it would behoove us to have that information available to the public. So how would we best go about asking Mr. Fuentes to put that report together moving forward?
Oh, thank you, Kusher Colville. So, you know, this is very common when, when we review annually the CIPs that we kind of venture off into the particulars of, of a project. So as a resident, you're certainly allowed to see in, in, you know, the, the total cost of a project. And, and some of these things are, were, we haven't yet worked out all the details. So, you know, for example, you want to see a contract between the city and the contractor that we hire to do the, like a street overlay. You know, those are, that is kind of the minutia, and it's public information, you can have it. But for the purpose of this meeting, you're really focusing on a project's correlation with some policy that's meant to achieve some outcome. And per state law, you need to, you need to recommend, your advisor, you're not a decision maker, that the CIP is consistent with the general plan policies. And then, you know, you got to understand that policies are very broad. You know, we were just getting into that, that one policy, uh, public safety two point one. You know, we, we're not here to discuss what type of body armor that a police officer wears or the caliber of ammunition they use in their gun. That is, that gets way too much into the weeds. The question is, is creating a sidewalk, does that improve mobility? And, and, and if you think there's a direct relationship with the policy, you make that call. If you feel that a police officer having a protective vehicle, no different than a bank has an armored vehicle to move money, I guess they could have in the back of the station wagon. Is that a correlation that's tied to the general plan, right? So it's, it's very common to kind of jump into it and dive into it. So somehow you, you're, you need to separate some of the more personal interest with really kind of the broad brush of a general plan. So anything that you want to understand in terms of the public's transparency, we can get it for you. But in terms of this meeting, it's really looking at it as, do sidewalks improve mobility? Is that connected to the general plan? Are streets paving, is that tied to the general plan? And, and just kind of keep it simply like, like that.
Perfect. I understand. Thank you for the explanation. And I, and I think I don't want to, I don't want to take any more time on that, because you're right, we're getting into the, the, the minute details. And my request was a, a, a side request. So I guess what I'll do is I'll, I'll reach out to Director Fuentes maybe directly or through you, Paul, to see about how to obtain that information later, or at least trying to work on a report that might help for the public's purpose. And again, outside of the scope of what we're talking about now. Thank you, Paul Kimmory.
Commissioner Hines, I think you're, we're on the questions for staff. So you still got questions for staff?
I, I want to, before we lose Police Chief Berg, I want to thank him and his entire department on just their, their service and excellent contribution to Campbell.
I had one question for.
Is there a question? Okay, good.
I do have a question for Chief Berg while we still have him. Thank you, first off, for being here to, and being willing to answer questions. So I think the, the concern that we have about the use of a, of a Bearcat is not so much its use for hostage rescue and, and in armed active shooter situations where I just like looked on Wikipedia and it's frequently used there. The, the concern we have is you train to use this vehicle, or vehicles of this type for this, for that sort of purpose. The concerns, I think, that at least that I have are that it would be used to, for example, deploy CS gas to disperse crowds. Is that something that, is that like a proposed or expected use of that kind of equipment? Is that something you train for?
So, I mean, the short answer is yes. And for, for a piece of equipment like this, I mean, so we have very detailed policies and procedures for most everything that, that we do. And a piece of equipment like this is no different. There were, there will be policies and procedures in place on how it's used, when it's used, who, who authorizes the use of it. And crowd control is, is one of those, uh, those potential uses for it. I, I am fully wanting to be a part of the conversation, fully want to be transparent with our, with our department, with what we do, because I'm very proud of the work that the women of our department do on a daily basis. And we're in a very interesting time right now, because there are issues coming to the forefront that most people haven't thought about, unless they're in the field of law enforcement. Would be surprised if a previous planning commissioner has ever talked about the deployment of CS gas. And I'm sure there's people who, who aren't familiar with it. But it, our current situation brings up those questions. I, I guess, I guess my, my response to that is, and this is with all due respect, the, the operational aspects of the police department are based on legal advice, training, years of experience, input from other police departments who have, who have had pieces of equipment like this. And whether somebody's for or against using rubber bullets, or for or against using tear grass in a riot, I, I, I think those are ancillary discussions, and they're, they're valid discussions, and I'm more than willing to be, to be a part of those. But when it comes to a, a purchase of a piece of equipment, like we're talking about specifically for this, I think, I'll repeat myself, but at the end of the day, I am looking to equip our police department to appropriately serve our community and provide the level of protection that you deserve. And it is my belief, my strong belief, that this type of equipment will accomplish that. And you look at situations like the Gilroy Garlic Festival. While, while we hope that it never happens here, there are situations that occur right in our backyard where this type of equipment may be used one day for that type of event. It may be used another day for a Denny's or, or our SWAT team serving a search warrant. So I, I guess the short answer to your question is there will be a variety of uses for a vehicle like this, but there are, will be policies and procedures in place to make sure that they're used effectively. And that goes for all of our equipment. And, and we just posted a response on, on our website today, if you're not familiar with the Eight Can't Wait campaign. And I think these discussions are valid right now, and I, it's important for you to know what our department is doing to, to serve you. But there's also a lot of background information and there's context to everything. And I think those are the important conversations to have on these recent current events. Sorry, I got off on a little bit of a tangent, but.
Thank you for, for answering that and explaining it. I, I very much appreciate your candor.
Let's just ask now if anybody has any more questions for staff, and we can open the public hearing, and that might be real quick, and we'll go right back to it. Any more questions for staff? All right, no more questions for staff, then I'll, I'll bring the gavel here and open the public hearing. Does anybody from the public wish to address Planning Commission on this matter? Seeing or hearing no, uh, nobody wanting to do that, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll go right back to our discussion. And I don't know who wants to take this. I guess, well, let me just jump in right here, just really quickly. And I, and I thought that these questions were, were really good. And obviously, the Bearcat question is, is an issue in the community right now because of what's happened in the last two or three weeks. And real valid question. I thought Commissioner Jing did a great job, Commissioner Cold, all, Commissioner Bookminder, everybody was doing a good job trying to stay on what the planning commission's purview is. Does, does the CIP follow the general plan? I think Commissioner Jing especially was trying to zero in on that, and I thought those were really, really good discussion. That just made me personally thinking about that. I think that, that, that the issue of the priorities now changing for police forces everywhere is an issue, is a political issue. I think in terms of what the planning commission is doing, does it follow the general plan? Uh, I, you know, I think I, I really don't have a problem with that. I think it does follow the general plan. So I think that the item before us is, is actually a pretty, pretty good and one that I, that I would pretty much approve. But let's open it up for discussion. I don't know who wants to go next, who wants to talk on these issues. Anybody? Have we all talked out?
I, I'm ready to make an motion to adopt the resolution, unless anyone else.
Commissioner Colville, I think Commissioner Jing wanted to speak here real quick.
Great.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. So, you know, it's not just this Bearcat, it's the whole range of CIPs. I don't have, I, I think they're all consistent. I do have a problem with the Bearcat. And I'm not saying it's needed, not needed or needed. I am not qualified to say whether we should have that as a community, right? And that's for Captain Berg, and there's other people outside of the police force who I'm sure would want to comment on that, right? There's a whole bunch of interest groups, so you have the view of the police and you have the view of other organizations. I'm purely looking at this from the purview of two point one and four point one. And in my mind, we don't know what the citizens' needs are. I think that I'd be surprised if they haven't changed over the last few weeks. It may be, we need it even more, or it may be that we don't need it at all, right? The two extremes. And the improved feeling of safety, very subjective, right? What I'm saying is rather, in my mind, rather than stamping this and saying, yeah, go ahead, I think in the current circumstance, we should pause and think about this. And take this back to the city council and public forum for, for discussion. So I'm, I'm okay with everyone, but I, I'm not in agreement on the Bearcat for those reasons.
Anybody else want to address the, the issue? I guess we, could we do a motion that would break out the one item separately?
I want to actually support the Commissioner Colville and, and Chief Berg. To me, we, we have a police chief that has a and I don't exactly know, I commission, Police Chief Berg's resume, but he's got a lifelong career and commitment of, you know, in this. And there's a tremendous amount of legal review police, police review that they go through with this to address situations. And I think if as our role for agreement to the general plan and the safety of Campbell, I fully support and feel that the request from Police Chief Berg or however the requests were made, that they be incorporated and accepted by the planning commission to move to move forward. I'm I'm not in favor of separating out or line item veto the 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 plan.
We could try a motion and let's see what see what happens. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'd like to adopt, make a motion to adopt the resolution. They were finding the proposed capital improvement plan from the city of Campbell, 2021 to 2025 as consistent with the Campbell general plan. We have a second.
Second? Second, Heinz, seconds. Corinne, can we have a a roll call vote?
In alphabetical order, Commissioners Bookbinder?
Aye.
Commissioner Ching?
For the reasons stated, no on the Bearcat. So that would be known, that would be, since it's not broken out, that would be noted for everything.
Commissioner Colville?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinz?
Aye.
And Commissioner Rivlin?
Aye.
And Chair Cray?
Aye. So that motion passes. So the the matter will be coming up at the city council meeting tentatively scheduled for June 25th. Well, that closes that item.
Chair Cray, just for conclusion of that item and Commissioner Ching, Commissioner Ching, your 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 comments and opinions will will be reflected in a minute. So your opinion will be conveyed to the to the council.
Thank you.
Very, very valid opinions. So that item is closed. So we'll move to our second and last item on our Zoom meeting here, our first Zoom meeting. Second item is PLN 2019-215, Public Hearing to Consider the Application of Anti-Peas. I messed up that name, I'm sure. For a site and architectural review permit, PLN 2019-215, to allow the construction of an approximately 3,800 square foot one-story, single-family residence and an increase to the allowable fence height on property located at 596 Emery Avenue. Staff is recommending that this item be deemed categorically exempt under CEQA. Planning Commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city council within 10 calendar days. And our project planner again is Daniel Fama.
Thank you. Let me share my screen. Just give me one moment here. Screen.
It was a while ago, Chair, but didn't we review this in SARC?
It was a SARC review, so we'll ask for the SARC report after the staff report. Yeah.
I wanted to make sure I was still thinking.
That is, that is a SARC item, definitely.
Okay, has everyone seen that?
Got it.
Got it.
All right, great. So this is a site and architectural review permit for a property located at 596 Emery Avenue for construction of a new single-family home. This is an approximately 13,300 square foot, single-family parcel on Emery south of Bud, located in the R110 Single Family Zoning District, subject to the Santa Moss area neighborhood plan. The site is developed with the single-family residents that would be substantially demolished as part of the application. Here we have the site plan that shows the 3,800 square foot, single-family rebuilt house. It also shows the conversion of an existing garage or it's a rear of the property that would be converted to an ADU. Other improvements include a new swimming pool, rear deck, patio. The plans indicate eight-foot-high fencing at the rear property lines as well as about halfway off the side property lines, tapering down to standard height as you approach the street. The driveway has been slightly modified since SARC reviewed it. Different configuration to also show permeable pavers. The product would comply with all applicable setback and development standards with a 0.33 FAR and a 35% lock coverage. The design shown here is mid-century modern, incorporating offset angular roof lines, asymmetric windows, mixed wall cladding with stucco and vertical cedar. Staff believes that this design may be found consistent with the design guidelines of the Santa Moss area neighborhood plan. While mid-century modern is not commonly found within the Santa Moss area, the design style does tend to incorporate features that are common throughout the whole community and within the Santa Moss area, such as hip and sloped roof lines as well as stucco wall cladding. The Santa Moss plan does provide a lot of flexibility to the planning commission in reviewing architectural design. It does not incorporate prescriptive design styles like some plans do in other cities where only certain types of designs are allowed and other types are prohibited. The plan even goes out of its way to say that it's not doing that in order to provide that degree of flexibility to the planning commission. Therefore, in conclusion, staff does recommend that the planning commission adopt the resolution approving the site architectural review permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan, Daniel. Are there any questions for Daniel or staff?
I noticed that there is a, the modifications is to the fence height. Can you talk a bit about why we, what is the purpose of the fence height limits? And why is this more flexible? I noticed that when the, when Stack sent their addendum, they said they like the higher fences and they wish that all the fences could be that high by right. Can you tell us a bit more about those regulations and the reasoning behind them?
Sure. The the standard fence height in the city is six feet. And that applies to the side and rear property lines. Typically, however, fencing needs to reduce in height as you approach the street. Full high fencing also is limited to at least beyond the first 15 feet of the property to minimize the walling off of a property. That being said, there are a lot more frequent requests to increase fence heights between properties. And that typically is something that staff does approve through administrative fence exceptions when both neighbors are agreeable. Taller fences between properties don't really have a community impact since they're not typically that visible from the streets. In this case, the back of the property does face the percolation pond, so there's no issue here. In this particular case, the site plan actually shows the the breakpoint where you can see my cursor. And so at that point, it drops from eight feet to three and a half feet. So from the street perspective, it won't appear as if the property is being hemmed in like a compound. I would point out, though, for context, that in the Campbell Village area that the neighbors did actually want to have a greater fence height by rights. And that plan does allow seven feet now, which is more permissive than the Santa Moss area.
So to sum up, there's sort of a balance between the community effect of not everybody, of everybody not having very high fences, which would make everybody look like they were sealed in their own compounds. But at the same time, people want privacy. So that's what this is trying to balance between?
Correct. I mean, fencing tends to be a bit more challenging around corner lots. When people really want to maximize their side yards, it then often comes at the expense of the streetscape. But that's not the case.
Well, and I'd like to make a comment on that if if I can.
Sure. Well, these are questions for staff, but we'll we'll have the discussions shortly.
Got it.
Any questions? Any more questions for Daniel? Anybody? Well, that maybe we should ask for the SARC report now. I know SARC reviewed this, goes way back, I think, but is there a SARC report on this project?
I'm, I'm pretty sure I was there. I can't remember who else was there.
Yeah, I was there with you.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Yeah. I I think the keynotes were in the package that Daniel sent out. I I would, so I think that really captures it. I think our our feeling was it was a very good design. Modern, but also type of the single, single-story, fitting into the San Thomas neighborhood. I don't remember anything really being being an issue. And in fact, it looked actually an excellent design.
Yeah, I think that was, I I share that and that was kind of why it was felt like a really good fit. There wasn't really anything, they weren't trying to pressure anything, push any decision on there. I think we had also suggested they they talked to the the community team and Stack and it sounds like they had a good, good conversation with them. And the the letter from them was certainly favorable. So that was, they did, they certainly want to engage and and be part of the community, so.
All right, very good. Yeah, very good report. And then we'll open up the the public hearing. And I know that the applicant and the architect are here. I'm not sure who wants to speak, but if the applicant would care to waited very patiently and applicant would care to address us or the architect, now is the time.
Yes, hi. My name's Auntie Pies. I'm the architect on the project. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Um, yeah, this is my first project in Campbell, so I'm really excited that we finally made it this far. We've been working together with the owners for about a year on this project. Had a lot of design iteration before we, you know, kind of settled on on this one. As I said in the SARC meeting, for those who were present, I think a lot of our decisions were guided by site and site and 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 community features. You know, we we knew we wanted a single-story structure because of the scale of adjacent homes. We chose the roof shapes and angles to for solar orientation. We have a long, a large solar array on this south-facing roof. And we really generally just wanted a building that was clean-lined, but also informal, inviting, non-pretentious and energy efficient. Those were kind of the words that the owners had in their mind when they first spoke to me and reached out to me. And I'm kind of hoping that with this design where we've achieved most of those goals.
Thank you very much. Would the applicant care to speak?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Pranati and.
I'm Sean.
Nice to meet everybody. I don't really have a lot to add over what Auntie has already said. We've got, I think I met Commissioner Heinz and Commissioner Ching at the last meeting, which was about three months back. We were hoping to actually bring this project in in March.
Sorry about that.
Yes. And we're still hoping to try to get the permits in, you know, after this approval. We're excited about joining the Campbell community and we're looking forward to being a part of it.
Well, thank you very much. Is there anybody else out there that wants to address the commission on this item? I don't think there, there, okay, nobody is. So at this point, then we'll just close the the public hearing and bring it back to the commission and whoever wants to start it off. Who's game?
I'd like to just touch on the concern that Bookbinder had, if I can.
Sure.
The the question was regarding the fence height and just being a neighbor in that that same area. The property they're speaking of on Emery, it it does back up to that reservoir, which is also right there with Santa Moss and very noisy. I'm actually sitting in my backyard now in that same neighborhood. You could always hear the cars and I'm a little bit deeper in from Santa Moss than Emery is. I'm off of Sobrato, so I'm I'm close enough to still hear a lot of the the sounds. I think an eight-foot-high fence back there will be beneficial to the owner for privacy reasons, the main street is right there and also for sound. And so just I wanted to give some context to Commissioner Bookbinder on that that fence height because I do find it very relevant with Santa Moss right there.
Thank you. That that is definitely relevant.
Anybody else? I guess I'll I'll put in my quick two cents is that, and I agree with SARC, that it really is a, it's a really a nice design and I and I really like the design. Saying that, I did have, I did have to look twice, three times because of the of where it's located in the stamp, which is trying to maintain the rural you know, area and try, everybody's trying to 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 kind of get along there really nicely. And I really, a lot of my concerns were taken out when the Santa Moss area neighborhood associations comments I thought were very good. So I, yeah, I do think it fits in. I did think of a bike alert when I saw this a little bit. I know that 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 the Santa Moss area neighborhood association said the same thing. I think it's nice. I think it definitely is unique. It'll be a unique. But you know, there's no reason why Santa Moss area can't have a nice, you know, modern unique design that still fits in with the with the neighborhood. So I thought that was a pretty nice project. Anybody else? Commissioner Rivlin?
I'm supportive of the project. I think that looks very nice and would fit the community.
Commissioner Bookbinder? I'm, I'd be in support of the project. I like the way it looks. It's a beautiful house and I'm, I'd like to thank the architect for doing business here.
I'd like to.
Oh.
We're just making a motion.
Yep, I'm just ready to make a motion.
Good, that's good. Anybody?
I'll like to make a motion adopting resolution, approving site and architectural review permit, PLN 2019-215, to allow the construction of approximately 3,800 square foot, one-story, single-family residence and an increase to the allowable fence height. Do we have a second?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded in by a few people, I guess Commissioner Ching, I think, was one. Corinne, can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bookbinder?
Aye.
Commissioner Ching?
Aye.
Commissioner Colville?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinz?
Aye.
Commissioner Rivlin?
Aye.
Chair Cray?
Aye. So that item passes. Congratulations. And this item is final. And the planning commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within 10 calendar days.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Yeah, welcome to Campbell.
Yeah, thank you for coming to Campbell and the architect, thank you for helping us in Campbell.
Thanks, Auntie. Thank you. Can we, are we allowed to?
You can.
You're all done.
You're all done. You're all done. You can, you can hang around. We have all kinds of interesting things to talk about because Commissioner Comoyan is going to give his report. Yeah, you've had a lot already. Commissioner Comoyan, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Chair Cray, members of the planning commission. So the city council has been working pretty hard to help the business community. Last Tuesday ago today, we had a meeting and it was a conversation on how to work with the business community for recovery. And they focused on dining, restaurants with dining because the new county order allows the public now to eat in restaurants, but only outdoors. So in order to help make up for lost space indoors, the council gave us direction, gave staff direction to allow flexibility of its standards. And what that means is that we are working with the business community to allow them to expand their outdoor dining areas without any permits. There's still oversight and there's a relaxation of the codes. So for example, in the downtown, dining is supposed to not go beyond the tenant space of the occupied business. And they're allowing businesses now to expand beyond their storefronts. And this is all an effort for the recovery. And at today's meeting, they had a meeting today on the budget, they memorialize that direction in resolutions. However, we've already been working with the businesses as of last Friday. So if you notice a lot of vibrancy in the downtown, that's a direct result of the council's forward thinking. So if you notice a lot of vibrancy in the downtown, um, that's a direct result of, of the council's forward thinking. Um, and, uh, we, we really appreciate that because the, the businesses are, are now thriving. And this is an effort for our recovery. So that's the, uh, discussion about outdoor dining on public property. Um, we're still going to meet with the, um, DCBA to discuss logistics on allowing, uh, dining to be, um, in, uh, public parking lots as well as public parks. And we have a meeting on Thursday. Staff has a meeting with the DCBA, the Chamber of Commerce, uh, to discuss that. So stay tuned, um, and if you have any questions, feel free to contact me tomorrow. Uh, anything else on the director's report?
Thank you, Director, for helping, uh, the businesses. They're, they're suffering.
Yes.
Uh, just excellent, uh, forward thinking on, on that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you for the feedback. That definitely helps us and, uh, the staff's doing a tremendous job. Uh, we're zooming now. Um, this is part of our technology, uh, the new norm. Uh, we are fully functional in terms of the community development department's permit processing. Um, we, um, Daniel, when did we, um, open up, um, our, our permit?
Our permit? Um, May.
May, beginning of May?
Beginning of May, yeah.
So bege- beginning of May, and I reported to the council today. From, um, the beginning of May to today, to June 5th, last Friday. Uh, we've been just super swamped. So, um, you don't need to come into a physical building anymore. You can submit anything online. It could be a huge subdivision. It could be a heater. It, it doesn't really matter and, um, we've taken in, uh, almost $500,000 in permit fees. So we're, we're moving along. This, this is a good sign of recovery. So, uh, working hard. Um, the Zoom meetings, we're going to continue with Sark and planning commission all Zoom. So technology is our friend and, um, this meeting, uh, has been pretty good. Uh, and we're going to continue to refine it. One of these days, we'll be back in the council chambers. But for now, it's, uh, social distancing and Zoom. And I believe that concludes my report. Any questions, commissioners?
Uh, just, uh, uh, fellow commissioners, Collins, great job from the, uh, the planning department and, and the councils helping these businesses get back. Uh, it's, it's tough.
Yeah, I have to give a lot of thanks to Daniel and Stephen. Um, they, they're, uh, very tech savvy. So they really helped propel our, my government online, our, our, uh, software system to really open it up. Um, when we had initially, they'd been in the shutdown, uh, we took that time to get this, this system up and running. So we're.
Good job.
You seem, yeah, excellent job. We seem to have a dearth of, uh, attendees, which, uh, uh, would be, would have been very unusual in the, uh, uh, in the office environment. So, um, you know, usually that, uh, you know, in a, this sort of Zoom environment, maybe there's a, it's, you know, a, uh, just a one-pager, uh, that could be sent out as far as how to Zoom. Uh, maybe Cecil can help as far as getting that out to, uh, uh, to attendees. I don't know if you're seeing the same thing in the council meeting, but, uh, but, you know, I think that there certainly would be a lot of, uh, um, technology inhibiting, uh, step for the, uh, the, you know, the majority of, uh, of people to participate in some.
Commissioner Heinz, I believe you have to pre-register. I don't believe you could attend randomly. I think you had to pre-register to attend.
There is a link. It's, it's pretty easy, I think, to do it if you want to, but you gotta know how to do it, I guess, or where to look for it.
Yeah, just encourage a little more, uh, um, assistance to them to do it.
I, we can certainly, I'll, I'll work with, uh, Cecil and the gang and, and try to get those. You're talking about instructions, right?
Yeah, yeah, just a, you know, one-pager, hey, this is how you get to, uh, you know, Zoom to participate in all, you know, all the meetings.
Sounds good. Thank you.
There's still going to be a couple of clicks.
Yeah, yeah.
And then you, and then you get what I think, I don't know which one had the kid walk in, but that's what you get when you're on Zoom and doing this sort of thing. Uh, you get the, uh, the extra person, uh, the extra sound, which, uh, I think every, every video conference I've been on has been having that. It's, it's pretty fun to see, so, and here.
Okay, well, you know, it's great to see everybody and I guess so we're, we'll close this meeting.
I have some, I have some new business.
Commissioner Bookmy, oh, I'm sorry, new business, Commissioner Bookbinder.
Um, so just to introduce, um, before this all started, uh, um, Commissioner Colville and I, uh, attended, uh, Planning Commissioners Academy and did a lot of learning and reading. And it turns out, I was not aware of this, but, uh, the planning commission can initiate, um, amendments to the zoning code. So as I understand it, and please, Paul, correct me if I have this wrong, um, I, I, we would propose something here. If we get a majority, we agendize it and discuss an actual, um, amendment to send to the city council at the next meeting. Is that, do I have that right?
Yeah, and I, I believe you've asked this question before and, and it's actually spelled out in the municipal code. You can initiate a zone text amendment. However, if it involves money and staff time, I definitely need to forward that up to the council so they can consider it within their priorities. And i- if they feel it doesn't fall within their priorities, they can in essence veto. Your.
Absolutely understood. Both of the items I, I'd like to discuss. Uh, one of them, there, it does require research, but we had an intern do it last year and the other one, I don't believe would require research. Um, so I'll just, the first one is, um, we asked, uh, one of Paul's interns to research parking modifications in, uh, lowered parking requirements in areas near, or commercial parking requirements in areas near train stations or transit-heavy environments. Um, I would like to propose that we discuss in the same way that we have reduced residential parking requirements. We discuss having lowered commercial parking requirements near our transit stations. I don't know if I need to be more specific than that.
So you, you're, you're asking to initiate a zone tax amendment to modify the parking standards near transit?
The commercial parking standards, yes.
The residential and commercial?
I believe the residential ones already are modified.
Well, I mean, you can, you can initiate a tax amendment for.
Sure, let's say, let's say residential and commercial.
Okay. So Bill, they would need to, there would need to be a second to, to, uh, initiate that or would it have to be at a, another meeting?
Yeah, first, yes, the first, am I, I'm unmuted. Okay, good. Um, the first step is you have to get it on an agenda. You can't take action on it tonight. It still has to be on an agenda, so you'd have to move to put it on, on a future agenda.
Uh, that's, I would like to do that. That's what I, I am, pardon me.
If he's making a motion to put that on the agenda, then I would second the motion to agendize that item for discussion in a future meeting.
Wait, no, I'm sorry.
It was Commissioner Colville who seconded. I guess my two cents is that, you know, I'm not sure, uh, it's the city council, what the city council priorities are, uh. We have talked about, and I was going to ask, uh, Director Kromoyan, I forgot. Believe it or not, after reading our minutes from February 11th, when we had a really good discussion about the, the desirability that I think we were all in sync on, having a joint meeting with the city council. Uh, I wonder if that's a first step and we kind of get their input into, you know, do they want us taking this initiative? Do they already have their priorities with this, with this mess up the city? If the, if the planning commission is setting new priorities? Or is that what they're looking for from us? Do they want us? Because we, we see something that's probably a good thing to look at. How should we be taking the initiative and bringing it up to them? So.
My understanding is that the municipal code specifically allows us to do that. So I think we're, it's certainly within our purview, but if we.
He froze.
Should we, should we vote to agendize the item?
Well, okay, if there's any discussion, any more discussion on the item?
I don't know that we can discuss the item other than.
After it's seconded?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's, uh, let's have a vote, uh, I guess a roll call vote on this, huh?
Are we discussing it or not?
We're here.
You, you can't really discuss it right now.
Right.
Yes, you, you need to determine if you want this on another agenda. So we have a, a motion and a second. So is there a unanimous vote to include it on another agenda?
I vote in favor.
Could we have a roll call?
Should we do a roll call vote? Yeah, let's just.
Okay, we can. Bookbinder?
Aye.
Ching?
No, you're muted.
Vote, vote on Andrew.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Colville?
Aye, in favor.
Commissioner Heinz?
No.
Commissioner Rivlin?
Aye.
And Chair Craig?
And I'm saying no for now, so no. But the item does pass, so I, I guess it will be on our, our next agenda on the 23rd or does it, does it have to wait till?
No, it will be on a future agenda.
July, probably.
I can't give you a date. I have to work that into, uh.
Okay.
Workflow does.
Commissioner Bookbinder had another item, I believe?
Uh, yes, there was another item I want to agendas for future discussion in the same way. Um, at our last meeting in February, um, we spoke about how there was a five-year deferment for building code enforcement for, uh, existing ADUs, but there wasn't a deferment for zoning code enforcement. And, um, Daniel said that that's absolutely something that we could discuss at a later time. So I'd like to agendize discussion of a five-year deferment for zoning code enforcement for existing ADUs.
Do we have a second?
Can we clarify, please, what, what it is, uh, Commissioner Bookbinder? What is it you're agendizing for discussion? One more time, please.
Currently, uh, Daniel, if you're on, please correct me if I'm wrong. There is currently a five-year deferment for building code enforcement for existing ADUs. Um, I am proposing a five-year deferment for zoning code enforcement for existing ADUs to accompany that.
I see. And so what you're trying to do is, of course, uh, just discuss it by agendizing it, correct, Commissioner?
Yes.
I second that.
I'm, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm unaware of any zoning ordinance enforcement of ADUs. Is this, is this a problem? Is?
Paul, I believe that, uh, Commissioner Bookbinder is, um, referring to that ADU variance on reading the situation that arose from that, the distinction in state law that building code enforcement is deferred for five years upon owner request. But that setbacks, for instance, are zoning code violations and that that violation is not deferrable.
It was my impression that that was part of the zoning code and therefore in our purview. If I am incorrect about that, uh, please let me know.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can provide an explanation. I mean, that, that one's a little unique. I mean, they, they built a structure without a, violated the, the zoning, so. They, so happen to use it now for an ADU. So, we can, we can provide a response to that.
Okay, so is, that, that is something that I, I can actually propose to discuss at a future meeting?
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's unusual though to create a zoning ordinance provision for a single property. This isn't a prevalent thing, so but if, if you feel that's.
I, ju- just to explain, I'm under the impression that there are an unknown number, because enforcement is ad hoc. There's an unknown number of existing, um, unpermitted or possibly non-compliant ADUs in the city. And that this is not a one-off situation.
Yeah, because I, I oversee code enforcement, I'm, I'm not aware of a plethora of these, you know, these, of this situation. So, but we can certainly agendize it and provide a more detailed response to see if, if you're willing as a commission to pursue such a change. Because if it only involves one property, if, if that's even applicable, does it make sense to, you know what I mean?
Like, we don't know how many. I'm under the impression that we don't know how many unpermitted ADUs there are in the city and therefore, like, we can't say that this only applies to one. We, we don't know how many it applies to. But we should talk about this at a later point. I, I would like to. So, like to move to agendize that for future discussion.
Is the motion's made? Did we second it?
I seconded it.
Commissioner Colville seconded? So I guess a roll call vote, Corinne?
Commissioner Bookbinder?
Aye.
Commissioner Ching?
No.
Commissioner Colville?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinz?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Rivlin?
Aye.
And Chair Craig?
I'll say no for the same reason as the last one. So that, that leaves us with a three-three vote. I forget what happens.
Doesn't pass.
Does not pass.
Yeah.
Yeah, that motion fails.
I, I'd like to, to, to chime in and just support Commissioner Bookbinder for a sparking discussion. Uh, I know we've had a long day. We've been a while since we've seen each other, long meeting, Zoom. Uh, but look, I, I truly commend Commissioner Bookbinder for sparking discussion that's not on our agenda currently. This, I find absolutely imperative to the success of ourselves as a commission and as a city. Uh, if we were to just continue to look at what we have put in front of us on the desk items, uh, without trying to discuss things further that we felt important, uh, we'd be silencing and handcuffing ourselves. And so that's why I feel strongly about seconding his, uh, his motion. Uh, e- even if it doesn't pass, at least that way we can discuss what it is Commissioner Bookbinder feels is important as opposed to censoring that. Um, so I do appreciate that, Commissioner Bookbinder. And I hope we see some more, uh, of that, uh, foresight in, into, uh, what we're doing here as a commission. Thank you, sir.
I totally agree with, uh, Commissioner Bookbinder and Commissioner, uh, uh, Colville on bringing up this new business. Um, while I voted against both of these, um, I feel that, uh, it is a vote against that because I feel that there's, um, higher priority issues. Um, specifically about what I started the conversation around, about how to address the, uh, the, you know, the response of, uh, COVID-19. Uh, I don't want to propose an agenda item at this time because I think that, uh, uh, people are, are working on, on that, uh, within the council. But, uh, I think that we really want to make sure that, uh, uh, we're, we're focused on the, the immediate, immediate issue. And I think it's a vitally important issue for us to, uh, uh, come up with, uh, a way to address these issues. So, uh, please, Commissioner Bookbinder, Commissioner Colville, uh, please take my no vote. Merely that I just feel that there's, uh, a higher priority item in there. Uh, but I look forward to co- the conversations on the, uh, uh, the first one that you, that you had agendized.
Thank you very much. And that's all I have.
Mr. Kromoyan, uh, then really following up on Mr. Bookbinder's comments on the ADUs. So I think it's the same item that wasn't at the item that we had the split vote and we were going to take it up again.
Right.
We're trying to get more people to show up and we never did it. And next thing you know, there's a pandemic.
Yeah.
It's three months or four months later. So whatever happened, whatever happened with that item?
It'll, it'll be coming back to you next meeting, next meeting.
Make sure there's an odd number of commissioners.
Well, so, so in a way, we've kind of got it agendized anyway, Commissioner Bookbinder. It's coming back next meeting. Now, those are all good comments, everybody. I, I appreciate all your time and, and enthusiasm. You could tell that we're all, we're chom- chopping at the bit after months of waiting, so.
Yeah.
I think at that point now, we'll close this meeting of the planning commission via Zoom. And we will, uh, to our next meeting, which will be via Zoom on Tuesday, uh, June 23rd. And see everybody then.
All right, thank you.
See you all. Stay healthy, stay safe.
Stay healthy. Bye-bye, everybody.
Have a good night.
Bye-bye.
Bye.